Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the November 29, 2022 Meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. This time, I'd like to ask Pastor Beal if he would give us an invocation, please.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Father Nathan Bell. I'm rector of Middleham and St. Peter's Parish, which is an Episcopal church in Lusby and Solomon's Island. I'm going to give just two short prayers from our Book of Common Prayer today, one for local government, but first for a birthday. I understand we have at least one birthday in the room. Is that right?
We do.
Could you raise your hand if you have a birthday today?
Today?
Oh, great. Okay.
[laughing]
Let me pray for Commissioner Hart and others who might have a birthday today.
Do we have that much time?
I'll just keep it short, and then I'll give a prayer for our, for our local government. So let us pray. "O God, our times are in your hand. Look with favor, we pray, on your servants as they begin another year. Grant that they may grow in wisdom and grace, and strengthen their trust in your goodness all the days of their lives through Jesus Christ our Lord." Amen.
Amen.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this county the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, infinite in its essence, and all.
So thank you, Pastor Bell. We appreciate you coming in and joining us today. So the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt the agenda as submitted.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. So I do have a couple of public service announcements today. Tonight at 6:30, the Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing regarding proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan. That hearing will be held at the Harriet Brown Center on Daris Beach Road. That's at 6:30. Individuals can listen or comment by phone. The number is 1-888-475-4499, and the meeting ID is 899-4188-8251. And you can also view the meeting on the YouTube channel for Calver County Government. And also, this coming Saturday, we're going to have a Christmas celebration at the Kings Park in Prince Frederick over on Church Street. It runs from 11 to 5. Santa's going to be there. There will be vendors there. There will be lots of activities. Last year, we had a very good crowd, so encourage everybody to come out and attend that. And the other thing was mentioned, today is Commissioner Hart's birthday. It's also Delegate Jerry Clark's birthday and Commissioner-elect Todd Arlen's birthday, so we want to wish all those individuals a very happy birthday.
Thanks.
That's all I... How old are you again?
Fifty-four.
Ah, fifty-four. Can't remember fifty-four.
So I'm still the young guy.
Yeah. I'm not even going to go there. So that concludes the public service announcements. The next item on the agenda is appointments. And Ashley?
Good morning, Commissioners. We have two appointments up for today. First up is for the Calver County Ethics Commission, and staff is recommending that you appoint Timothy Cox, who is currently an alternate member, to be a full member of the Calver County Ethics Commission, at which time you'll have two vacancies remaining.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second?
I have a motion and a second that we appoint Timothy Cox, currently an alternate, to be a full member of the Calver County Ethics Commission. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
And last up, we have the Employee Recognition Committee, and staff is recommending that you appoint Ashley Wilkerson and Amalia Peet Tam to the Employee Recognition Committee, at which time you'll have no more vacancies remaining.
So moved. Second?
I have a motion and a second that we appoint Ashley Wilkerson and Amalia Peet Tam to the Employee Recognition Committee. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is old business, Department of Planning and Zoning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Christopher Spurling, Historic Preservation Planner, here today in regards to the Historic District Design Guidelines adoption. For background, in FY 2020, the Maryland Historical Trust awarded the Calver County Department of Planning and Zoning a certified local government grant to revise the Calver County Historic District Design Guidelines. The document provides historic district owners guidelines with appropriate approaches to materials for restoration and rehabilitation, and are used by the Historic District Commission in considering historic area work permits and historic preservation tax credits. The current guidelines were approved and adopted in 2001. Discussion. The revised Historic District Design Guidelines will provide updated guidance for historic district owners, as well as the Historic District Commission, for their preparation and evaluation of historic area work permits and historic preservation tax credit applications. The current guidelines are outdated. The Calver County Historic District Commission approved forwarding the revised guidelines to the Board of County Commissioners at a regular meeting held during the work session on September 8, 2021. The B.O.C.C. advanced the draft guidelines to the Planning Commission during a work session on March 29, 2022. Planning Commission advanced the draft guidelines to Agency Comment during a work session on April 20, 2022. The Department of Planning and Zoning provided draft guidelines to relevant state and local agencies for review and comment period between May 9 and May 27. Following the Agency review, the Planning Commission recommended advancing to a joint public meeting with the Board of County Commissioners to discuss adoption. A public notice for the joint public meeting to be held on August 23, 2022 was published on August 5, and again on August 12, 2022. At the joint public meeting, the Planning Commission voted to approve the revised guidelines. The B.O.C.C. voted to leave the record open for an additional 10 days. During the comment period, two comments were received. An additional comment was received after the period was completed. All of those comments are available. Additionally, the Historic District Commission voted to advance these guidelines, again, to the Board of County Commissioners at their regular meeting in October 2022. Fiscal impact: none. Staff time used as a match grant was previously allocated. Grant funds were used to contract the services of Murphy and Dittenhofer Architects. The Historic Preservation Tax Credit remains unchanged. Recommendation as conclusions: Staff recommends the B.O.C.C. review and discuss the public comments received and the draft guidelines, close the record, and take action on the proposed guidelines. Thank you.
Questions? So Chris, you did receive some public comment. Were any changes made based on those public comments?
No changes were made based on those comments.
Anything else?
Mr. President, I move that we approve and adopt the ordinance repealing and re-adopting with amendments the Calver County Historic District Design Guidelines. Second?
I have a motion and a second that we, excuse me, approve and adopt the ordinance repealing and re-adopting with amendments the Calver County Historic District Design Guidelines. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us to public comment.
Thank you. The Board has adopted Resolution in 1989 intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy of that is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked us to remind speakers of public comment. Then lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy, and lobbyists must register in advance. Floor has been opened for public comment, first from persons in the meeting room who may begin making their way to the microphone, and then those joining virtually. All speakers must identify themselves, and whether speaking as an individual, where you'll be allocated two minutes, or a designated representative of a group, where you'll be allocated five. For those attending virtually, you may wish to press star nine, or use the Raise Your Hand function to speak. They will be identified by the last four digits of your phone number or screen name, and unmuted one at a time. Is there anybody in the room that wishes to provide comment? Please. This?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
And I want to real quick thank the exiting Commissioners for all of your time and effort that has been placed in our county, and to the incoming Commissioners, hopefully we can all work together between citizens, business owners, and the county in order to create a better county.
Thank you.
So the reason I'm here today is that I'm a concerned citizen as well as a business owner. My name is Kevin Marilat. I'm the owner of Marilat Pools located in Owings, Maryland. We've been there for 47 years. In order for us to perform our job, we have to obtain the right to work from the county. Recently, the county has added additional policies that are extremely devastating to production and workflow of jobs within Calver County. I've been bringing up the issues that the Public Works Department has been placing upon us in their interpretation of Maryland State Stormwater Management Code, that is now requiring any Calver County citizen to obtain an engineered building permit regardless if that project is under 5,000 square feet or over 5,000 square feet, which is the mark on that. In addition, I wanted to bring up, you know, a couple of examples, so that way we can see a project in Calver County versus maybe a project in St. Mary's or Anne Arundel. So, one, back in, back last year, I just want to give the really good example first. A job was taken to the permit office on 3/2/21, and the permit was issued on 3/25/21. That is an extremely awesome turnaround, and every job should have that turnaround. The reason that job had a turnaround is because it had a phone call from a commissioner to the Planning and Zoning Department, which sped that along. And that's not how permits should work. It shouldn't be who you know. It should be the process is fair to everybody. Another example is a recent permit that I filed in Huntington on 11/11 this year, '22. The permit has not even been entered into the system to be assigned a permit number at this point in time. On 11/17, I filed a permit in Mechanicsville. The permit is one signature away and will be issued tomorrow.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay. The point of the story is, I've been standing up against this policy because it is unfair, not to me as a business owner, but to my homeowners, and more importantly, to the gentlemen sitting behind me, the workers that work on the jobs. So I would like to start this fresh year with a real, honest understanding of why we have these policies, and how destructive they are, and how much they cost a homeowner. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the meeting room who wishes to provide public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bob Estes, and I'm representing the Friends of Hunting Creek today. First of all, I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving, and for Commissioner Hans, a good harvest, along with the rest of the agricultural community in Calver County. I want to thank all of you for your hard work, and in particular, those that will be leaving the Board. We appreciate what you've done, not just in this room, but also for the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts during their Eagle and Gold ceremonies. You've always been a fixture there, and it really means a lot to us. And lastly, for your work and moral fortitude in rejecting the Prince Frederick Phase II expansion and other expansions as well. But I live around here, so that's the one I look at more. So that Phase II is essentially dead. I know there's probably a few more votes and a few more signatures that have to happen, but, but there's still an awful lot of land out there, even land in the, in the Prince Frederick Town Center, that can still be developed at the high rate of, high density of 14 units per acre. There's a 40-acre chunk just west of the Calvert Hills apartment site that is, I guess, in the town center, and could end up being the same size as Chakline Place and Beach Street combined. There's enough room for that, and that land is fairly, fairly flat, as flat goes in Calver County. That, you'll, you'll end up with 560 high-density units there, 1,500 people, and potentially 1,000 more commuters. It's going to be tied to sewer, so there's that issue. And also, there'll be roughly a million-dollar-per-year deficit in operating budget expenses, and that's every year, from the time the thing goes, and that's using the, the average. I know Commissioner Gadway has issues with that, but those are the numbers I was given. And I seriously doubt that there's room in your budget for an extra $1 million here and $1 million there, because there's hundreds more acres, as you know, that can either be developed as high-density or even four units per acre density, close to the town centers. And right now, you know, the new adequate public facilities ordinance and the rules, rules embodied in it can, can slow down the growth, but it's just a six-year speed bump, as you all know. And I'm still hoping that eventually you all can get some provisions for really controlling growth that's targeting the growth, not just a byproduct. You know, and in addition, you know, maybe increase the limits on what's really buildable by looking at both soil types and slope together, because they both count. So a 5% slope can, if it's made of sand, will erode, just like any other slope that's higher. And lastly, in looking over the, the draft Public Facilities Ordinance, I noticed something that, that bothered me to some extent, and that is that, and it's on page 14, 15, that all you do need to do is submit a development application to get a placeholder that will allow you to basically go with the old adequate public facilities rules, not the new ones. And you get a 12-month, 12-month buy on that, and then you can put in your concept site plan. To me, that's too big a loophole, and should potentially be reconsidered. Right now, the developers and contractors out there, they, they know that there's changes in the adequate public facilities and in the comp plan. They know that's out there, and they've known it for months. They've got many more months to, you know, scab together some sort of a plan to make that placeholder. And I remember months ago, we were worried a little bit about that when we considered a moratorium on, on high-density building. But consider that and see if there's something in there that maybe could be done to, they reduce that to two or three months, or something along those lines. I'm not an expert at these things, but it looks like a big loophole to me. Again, thank you, and it's good to see you all again, and you all that are, be leaving the Board. I hope we still see you active in, in county business, because you've got the experience and the will to, to make this a better place. And happy birthday, Mike.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the meeting room who wishes to provide comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Cormier. I hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Happy birthday to Commissioner Hart there. You guys got a full schedule today. I just want to express again my, my comment on the cigar lounge ordinance change. I think we should be changing the ordinance to remove the ability for anywhere in the county for there to be indoor smoking. It just doesn't make sense. We spend so much time and effort through the Health Department and our local hospitals and our schools trying to get kids to not be on smokes and vapes and tobacco. It just doesn't make sense that we're going to change the rules to make it easier to allow indoor smoking. And it's gonna, if we let them have indoor smoking and alcohol consumption and bring your own snacks, it's going to open it up for all restaurants to go back to smoking, and that's not something we want in our county. I hope that you guys think about all the things that you're doing today, and how it's going to affect the growth. And as Bob was talking about, you know, more development's going to bring in more people, which is going to mean more schools, and we're at the seams on a couple of them right now. I hope that you just put a lot of thought into it, and two minutes is not enough time, so I hope the next board allows for a little bit longer public comment, so that people who have things to say, like Mr. Marilat, have time to say it. And if you had meetings that weren't at 10 o'clock in the morning, maybe in the evening, we'd have more people show up or call into these things. So that's something to think about. Otherwise, good luck today and have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the meeting room? Thank you. Just a reminder, if you're on Zoom, if you wish to make comment, please use the Raise Your Hand function or press star nine.
Good morning. My name is Michael Cox. I'm a sixth-generation farmer on a farm in Buzzed Island Creek. The farm is completely in a critical area. When I acquired the property, there was a trailer on the property. Actually, we lived there when we first got married, and in the process of trying to replace that trailer with a stick-built building. We've been in constant opposition with this since we started. We're pursuing trying to get this project completed. Just in March, we came to a part, or February, we came to a time where the permit would have been two years old. So I came to the county and said I needed to extend this permit so I could continue the work. I didn't hear anything back until March, when I went down to look what was going on. There were two stop work orders placed on the building. I came up here to the Planning and Zoning building to ask what was going on, and met Christopher Beedlove in the parking lot. He said he knew I was coming up there. He stated that there wasn't anything he could do. I had to talk to his superior. So I went to Joe Hawkerst and talked to him for a while, and he said there was nothing he could do. I had to go to his superior. I went to his superior, talked with Mayor Beth Cook, talked to her for a while, and said, well, basically, she was working under the direction of the Commissioners. So that's why I'm here today. I need something resolved on this project. I just went last week and had a long, two-and-a-half-hour meeting with Planning and Zoning, trying to resolve this issue, and they stated, I'm in the process of getting the mound system designed for this. It's in surveyor's office right now. It's gone through review twice with environmental health. It's going through another review. Once that is in place, I will try to get an application in for a house permit. In the meantime, I can't work on this building. I was in the process of putting windows in it, and the Tyvek is roping off of it. So that's my plea. I need time to work on this building until I can get the permit secured. And it would be nice if I could get it resolved back to the original house permit that originally applied for with this project. I think it would simplify a lot of things. I appreciate your time and attention, and you all have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the meeting room who wishes to provide public comment?
Good morning. My name is Anna Cox. I'm speaking on behalf of a group of farmers, so I will take five minutes. Thank you for this opportunity. It's a privilege most people in the world don't have today, and I don't take that for granted. I'm being sued by the Commissioners for zoning violations. My land is 100% in the critical area. One parcel is in the floodplain, and large portions are in the ever-widening buffer zone. We didn't choose, no one would, to farm here. This land was entrusted to us to enrich for the next generation. Is it environmentally sensitive? Yes, which is why we practice sound stewardship. The point is, we cannot avoid building in the critical area. It is our only option. We're a small-scale, sustainable, non-subsidized family farm. We raise produce, asparagus to zucchini, selling at the local farmer's market. Customers expect produce to be washed, sorted, bagged. In order to do that, we needed a building, so my husband, Michael, built a small structure using wood from tobacco barns that were scheduled to be bulldozed and burned to make way for subdivisions. He installed recycled cooling units, keeping more items out of the landfill. How many trees were cut? Zero. The building was tucked under existing trees, and more were planted. How much erosion is caused? Absolutely zero. All runoff is absorbed by leaf mulch, trees, and perennials. Does this building negatively impact the environment? Absolutely not. In fact, it significantly contributes to our ability to farm sustainably. Why didn't we apply for a permit? We understood that agricultural buildings less than 300 square feet were exempt. Why didn't we build further from the edge? Fields are reserved for crops. Other buildings are the same. No trees cut, no runoff, constructed with recycled salvaged material. All are agricultural, except for my children's bike shed. Some of these buildings now in the critical area may not have been there when they were constructed nearly 20 years ago. Lines and rules have changed. The problem isn't the buildings themselves, but a neighbor who harasses us by repeated complaints, forcing the county to waste valuable time and resources prosecuting a recycled bike shed that has less impermeable surface than the farm vehicles parked in front of it. If we're guilty of not getting permits, so are a great many other farmers and residents. All of Calver County is essentially critical area. Touching the bay, the Potuxent were a tributary, yet we are targeted. Remember, we're talking about minor sheds. We're not processing mercury but melons. We're not refining plutonium. We're raising produce. We're not a giant faceless agribusiness, but your local farming neighbor. We're not opposed to sensible regulation, but the penalties we're facing are out of proportion to the size and use of the building. We tried to comply by applying for after-the-fag permits, which launched us into a mind-boggling labyrinth of indecipherable regulations, impractical restrictions, and endless red tape. Specific problems: communication. We were never told vital pieces of information. Our request for an appeals hearing wasn't processed, because no one told us it had to be in writing. Complexity: county personnel admit they don't understand the rules either. One clerk told us, "It's all Greek to me." We don't speak Greek. Let's have plain English. Contradictions: getting something in writing is nearly impossible. Recording devices aren't allowed, so things that we were promised were later invalidated. Confusion: all this adds up to a great deal of frustration. One critical area worksheet alone had to be filled out three separate times. Cost: fines, fees, bonds far exceed the building's worth and are more than we earn raising vegetables. When we pointed this out to Planning and Zoning, they asked, "Then are you willing to remove these buildings?" We can't farm without our buildings. If our packing shack is gone, where do we band asparagus in April? Where do I arrange flower bouquets in May? And speaking of finances, how much money is the county wasting on my children's bike shed? Continuation: there's no end in Continuation: there's no end in sight. We jump through one hoop, they hold out two more. For nine months of the year, we are highly focused on planting, harvest, selling. The short period when we can work on projects is often squandered due to obstructions. Common sense: critical area rules do make allowance for farmers to harvest crops. Otherwise, remove no vegetation wouldn't permit us to cut hay, pull weeds, or pick strawberries. If there is an agricultural allowance for crops, then there should also be leeway for farm buildings to process and store crops. The rules say no impermeable structures or surfaces without a permit, and we're told now that includes structures of any size, even a doghouse. How many Calvert County residents got a permit for their doghouse? And includes even non-permanent buildings, like my greenhouse. Planning and zoning say they have to impose this on us because it is state and federal law, but there is discretion given to local enforcement. Do I really need a permit for every impermeable surface? If I have to get a permit for the doghouse, why not the dog dish? Clothesline poles, firewood, stack of hay, the children's trampoline? Let's have common sense. Conclusion: look at the big picture. We're a small farm practicing sound stewardship. There are more trees here than 30 years ago. We practice crop rotation, build soil tilt, provide vital habitat for raptors that the county bans here, have extensive pollinator plantings, and engage the next generation in ecologically-minded activities such as monarch watch, butterfly tagging. We have a wide buffer zone. Turtles come ashore to lay eggs. Songbirds thrive. Eagles and ospreys soar. Honeybees find nectar. If you force farmers off their land, you lose all that. When you outlaw our buildings, you destroy our ability to farm. Keep Calvert country. Let's honor our sustainable agricultural heritage by allowing family farms to thrive instead of hauling them into court. Let's protect sustainable agriculture instead of punishing it. I'm asking for your help to keep our farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to provide public comment? And, Mr. President, there's no one online with their hand raised, so...
Thank you.
So we have a public hearing scheduled for 10:30. We'll do that now. Department of Community Resources?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So two public hearing items on the agenda. The first is environmental health fees and charges. Background: As defined by the Maryland Annotated Code, Health General Article Section 3-201, the Calvert County Board of County Commissioners is the designated ex officio Board of Health for Calvert County. The local Board of Health is empowered to set any fee or charge in connection with its rules and regulations. Maryland Annotated Code, Health General Article Section 3-202(c)(1). Discussion: Dr. Larry Polsky, Calvert County's Health Officer, is proposing recommended changes to Calvert County's environmental health fees and charges to adjust annually with inflation. The proposed schedule of fees and charges was advertised in a paper of general circulation for two consecutive weeks prior to the public hearing. Fiscal impact: none at this time. Conclusion recommendation: Staff request that upon conclusion of the public hearing, the Board of County Commissioners close the record and adopt and enact the recommended changes to the environmental health fees and charges. We did not receive any public comments via mail or via phone, as made available in the resolution. There is a sheet there if anyone wants to come forward. We have not received any public comment and Dr. Polsky is here and Matt Kummer's is here if you have any questions.
I have a brief statement, if that would be okay?
Sure.
The Calvert County Health Department requests approval of the environmental health fee changes for 2023. Fees have been static for at least 15 years despite significant changes in costs of basic operations. The new fees are necessary to maintain adequate staffing in the department. Without proper staffing, we risk major disruptions to vital services for homeowners and businesses across the county. One year ago, eight of our 13 staff resigned in a four-month period to take higher-paying jobs elsewhere. These jobs are both in the private and public sectors. We were down to two staff to cover all of the well-on-septic needs for our entire county. For homeowners and businesses with failing septic systems, we were unable to inspect and approve applications in a timely fashion. We had almost no ability to respond to requests for new systems. In response to the rapid exodus of staff, we were able to petition the Maryland Department of Budget and Management to raise salaries to more competitive levels. Over the next six months, we were able to hire new staff. We now need the means of covering these new expenses. Failure to adopt to the realities of the job market will lead us to where two other Maryland counties currently are: collapsed environmental health departments with no means of processing permits. Our options are to draw general taxpayer revenue or adjust user fees. It is our goal to avoid shouldering the general taxpayer with the provision of these services. The proposed fee adjustments bring us to within 1% of our current costs. There is no profit for the Health Department. The second item in the proposal is an automatic adjuster that should prevent our current dilemma from repeating. In both the private and public sectors, costs inevitably increase over time. Having small incremental fee adjustments tied to the Consumer Price Index will have minimal yearly impact on local businesses and prevent the potential for unpredictable sticker shock in the future. Maintaining an adequate and well-trained environmental health workforce is necessary for the economic functioning of Calvert, which is more dependent on septic systems than any other county in Maryland. For this reason, we ask that you support the proposal.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the record and approve and adopt resolution enacting the recommended changes to the environmental health fees and charges effective January 1, 2023.
Second. Have a motion in a second that we close the record and approve and adopt resolution enacting the recommended changes to the environmental health fees and charges effective January 1, 2023. Discussion? So, Dr. Polsky?
Go ahead, Mr. President.
You say it's been 15 years since you've corrected your fees?
At least. Might even be a little bit longer than that.
And so these fees have been adjusted. There's not an across-the-board percentage increase. They've all been adjusted based on the time it takes to process?
Correct. We took a look at the actual staff time cost for each service and adjusted accordingly.
And did you compare our fees relative to the region?
We did. And the fees are still at or below the average cost in our surrounding counties.
And we've, you know, as you can imagine, we hear lots of concern about the cost of fees and doing business and the time that it takes. I think we had this discussion earlier when you were having employee issues about timing. And so can you talk a little bit about the impact of this has on timing of processing?
Well, what is the worst thing for both businesses and for any property owner, homeowners, business owners who depend on septic, is for us not to be able to process permits in a timely fashion. Two things go into that. Number one is just having the number of staff that we need, but the more hidden aspect is that those staff are well-trained. And what we've seen for year after year after year is that people come in fresh out of school, that most people don't understand that in order to be hired as environmental health specialists, you need a college degree. So most people come in fresh out of school, they work with us for a year or two, they build up their job experience, they have to pass a licensing exam, and then they just jump ship and go to pursue higher-paying jobs, and then the whole cycle starts all over again. So we spend a lot of time training people and then once people get experience, then we lose them. What we're hoping as part of this is that by having more appropriate salary structure, that we can keep staff for longer periods. Certainly, when we have experienced people and the supervisors can actually focus on their work and not constantly training new people, that going forward, we will be able to process at a much more expedited rate.
And we hear a lot about interpretation of rules, state regulations, and that we are more restrictive than other areas. So do we try to help these individuals work through this process to get something that works economically but still meets the requirements?
Absolutely. Matt, did you want to talk?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's part of the...
And you are?
My name is Matt Cummers. I'm the Environmental Health Director of Calvert County Health Department, Division of Environmental Health. Apologies for not introducing myself. But yeah, I wanted to express how, like, well-trained staff can really help negotiate. When you bring someone in new and you're constantly trying to train them, you've got the rulebook. And so you end up referencing the rulebook strictly. When you have well-trained staff that know how to negotiate and navigate through the regulations but still keeping in compliance, this helps us help our citizens stay in compliance but yet move through the process more expeditiously. So recruitment is one thing, but retention is also a huge element of that.
So what do you call an appropriate time for processing an application?
Well, this depends on the application and the complexity of it, you know?
You don't have a...
It's all variable, you know? The commercial site plan is going to take us a whole lot longer to review than, you know, building permit for a shed. So, you know, we train our staff to try to prioritize these things, the low-hanging fruit, what we call, and move the less complicated projects along quickly so that, you know, that we're not bogged down in some stack, you know? That we try to move the things that can move quickly as quickly as possible while still working on the complex projects. So every project's going to be unique and different.
Commissioner Hart?
So, a couple things. I think that's a good statement. I hate to rehire. It's costly. Commissioner Nutter had a great saying when he was in enforcement. They tell us what we can't do, but let's see what we can do.
Yeah.
And that was really a mantra at Calvert for a long time. Unfortunately, when you don't know the job and you're fresh out of school, you don't know what you can do.
Yeah.
And that is a big disconnect because you have people that work a certain industry or a certain field and they go, "Hey, for 20 years, we've been doing this." You know, my pop-up used to come up on, it was Fastpass or I forgot what it was. What was the express? What was it called?
Fast Track.
Fast Track. He knew it, you know, and he knew who to talk to and everything. So people would always kind of, you know, and unfortunate, that's a very accurate statement that gets lost there. And every time you do that, and I don't know how you, I don't know how you curb that. I really don't. You hear retention and everything, in the medical field, to everything. Everyone is struggling with retention. As long as, you know, with fees, obviously, no one likes that. We're seeing it in, when you go out to the gas pumps, you know? So like in my world, every distributor I have now has a gas surcharge. I've seen it in the past and then I've seen it go away and I've seen it come back and we're just seeing it in every single facet, from the grocery store to everything. And unfortunate, I don't know where the end in this tunnel is, you know? When you live long enough, you see, you know, inflation come and go and stuff, but unfortunately, we seem to be at a crossroads where it's everything at one time. It's a lack of help.
Yeah.
I mean, when you're hearing you can't get nurses and you're hearing law enforcement having record-low numbers of people coming out, it's a mess.
Yeah.
It really is. And to try to maintain some type of sanity, some... One thing I've asked our department before, and I'll ask you guys, you know, obviously some things are federally mandated, some things are state-mandated. You know, Calvert, you're either up a cliff or you're underwater. So there is a whole lot in the critical area here that I would ask if there are things that maybe are our discretion, that you feel that maybe is antiquated, that we just don't, you know, we just don't address that anymore, especially when, you know, man-hours are going to be ultra-ultra-premium, you know? And to have to go out and look at a shed or, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And like saying, and I don't know enough to speak to, hey, how many feet is, you don't have to do that anymore to, you know? I mean, me and Mary Beth have had discussions and I tell you, Mark corrected me on one. There was a gentleman come in and he was talking about we stopped work order on him because of the length of the stairs. And I called Mark and I said, "That is the dumbest thing I've ever heard. I can't believe we were measuring it down to a couple inches." Well, my whole life, I've used a handcart and I've bounced them downstairs and, I mean, everywhere, I mean, to load things. So I was taking a handcart down a bunch of stairs at storage shed and they are small. And I, Mark had said, he goes, "You don't understand. People have in their head what the length of a stair would be." And I did too. And I went down those stairs. I got the scars to show it. And I called him up and I said, "God," because I had told him, I said, "Mark, this is so stupid." So I understand some things are to protect us from ourselves, like me, but then going back to a common sense approach. And that's, I'm sure you guys are addressing it, but just asking that same question, you know, as well, that I think going forward, as businesses adapt, that's something we need to adapt to, that if we don't need it anymore, just let it go away.
Yeah, understood.
So, it's been my experience, both here and at the state, that rules and regulations are in place because they're a reaction to something. Something happened at some point in time that people didn't like, so there's a rule or regulation put in place to protect against that, whether it's a setback or being in critical areas, trying to protect the watershed. But the issue is, you know, we just heard a family talk about the situation that they're in, you know? I farm. My farm has been in our family for over 100 years, I'm in critical areas, you know? The government comes along and changes the rules and we have to abide by those rules. But as Commissioner Hart says, there's got to be some common sense in play here that, you know, I understand the rule says what it is, but I also understand that you have some leeway. And what I think gets lost sometimes in government is every time we implement a rule or regulation and a requirement, it costs money.
Uh huh.
You know, every time a permit get kicked back for review and engineers got to review it and that costs money. And that, you know, I say the same thing to our staff, you know, this is about customer service.
Yeah.
And working with our citizens and trying to make sure that we, you know, follow rules and regulations but use some common sense.
Yeah.
And so that's all we're asking of you and that, you know, I understand that, you know, you need fees to run the operation. We don't want a revolving door for employees. Hopefully, that'll correct that.
Yeah.
And 15 years is certainly a reasonable period of time for an increase in some fees. We're going to hear about it once it happens. You're going to hear about it and we're going to hear about it.
Yeah.
I'm going to go back tomorrow morning. Want to get out of the truck?
You know, in the environment that we're in today, you know, if we don't keep up with salaries, you're not going to maintain or keep anybody.
Yeah.
And if service suffers, if we don't try to do that.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, it's a balance. And it's not just us that's fighting the battle here. I mean, it seems like this is a struggle on all fronts. Every environmental health division's dealing with it, but, you know, every other business, every other governmental agency, it's an issue everywhere. So we're trying to do the best we can in our little, you know, sector.
And the common thread is always communication. People need to understand why the rule or regulation is in place.
Yeah.
They need to hear back about why. They need to hear about what they need to do. If there are delays, they need to hear that also. People get very frustrated when they don't get a response back.
Yeah.
So, you know, you just happen to be in the seat at this time to hear this, but I say the same thing to our staff, you know? We're in the customer service business and it's all about communication.
Yeah.
You can never over-communicate. And so I just ask that you do that.
Yeah.
We have digressed and I won't say anything else. Is there any other discussion?
Sure.
So, I have a motion in a second that we approve and adopt the resolution enacting the recommended changes to the environmental health fees and charges effective January 1, 2023. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
The next item on the agenda is another public hearing, Department of Community Resources.
I forgot to mention my name before. Jennifer Moreland, Department of Community Resources.
And I didn't catch that either.
It's never too late. You might have introduced me. Background: Minority Business Plan is a requirement for the Community Development Block Grant (CDPG) recipients. In order to remain in compliance with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD for the implementation of the Community Development Block Grant. Calvert County's Department of Community Resources must update the Minority Business Plan. The last plan was approved in September 2019 for three years. The Minority Business Plan Resolution was approved for legal sufficiency by the County Attorney's Office and advertised for two consecutive weeks in a paper of general circulation. DHCD has advised that moving forward, the Minority Business Plan can be in effect for five years from the signature date. Fiscal impact: none. Conclusion recommendation: Staff request that upon conclusion of the public hearing, Conclusion recommendation, staff requests that upon conclusion of the public hearing, the Board of County Commissioners close the record and adopt and enact the Minority Business Plan. Okay, we have, no one signed up and we have not received any written, um, public comments or over the phone. Do you have any questions?
Mr. President, I move that we close the record and approve and adopt resolution enacting the Minority Business Plan.
Second.
A motion and a second that we close the record, approve and adopt the resolution enacting the Minority Business Plan, any discussion on that motion? So I just want to thank you for getting the grant to be able to help our minority business owners, so really do appreciate that.
Well, these funds, I mean, we, I will say this whole process involves a lot of collaboration within the community procurement for these. And fortunately, our Community Resources Office works very closely with a lot of these minority business groups. They've applied for nonprofit, they're nonprofits themselves, they've applied for nonprofit funding, so, um, communicating to them has gone very smoothly and we do hope they are responding to these proposals. So we'll see. We have, we have business to come this year, that's for sure, with our new grant.
Very good.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Director. So the next item on the agenda is a work session from Department of Planning and Zoning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me is Jessica Gutano, Planner Two, and we're here to talk about your transportation priorities so we can get your letter together. So I'm going to turn it over to Jessica.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, so last month, uh, we were here and we spoke about the draft Consolidated Transportation Program, or the CTP, uh, for the fiscal year 2024 to 2028. We went over the funding that Calvert received and which projects would remain on hold or underfunded. So I'm just going to jump into the memo. Background, each year, the Calvert County Board of County Commissioners, B OCC, submits a transportation priority project letter to the Secretary of Maryland Department of Transportation. The purpose of the letter is for annual, annual consideration to be included in the state's upcoming six-year capital transportation budget, the consolidated transportation program, or the CTP. Highlights from the fiscal year 23 to 28 draft, CTP included funding for intersection improvements along Maryland 231 corridor and funding for a needs assessment study for a new transit transfer station. Counties determine their priorities, prepare local and regional priority letters and in the spring, submit the letters to the state for budget deliberation over the summer. This following, the, the following fall, MDOT publishes a draft CTP allocating funds for the next fiscal year cycle. From October to November, the Secretary of MDOT and the heads of MDOT's five business units and one authority tour Maryland's 23 counties and Baltimore City to present the proposed budget and discuss yearly initiatives. The tour allows local elected officials and citizens the opportunity to comment and ask questions. The MDOT's draft capital program is then finalized and, uh, submitted to the governor's budget to the General Assembly in January. Discussion, in the draft fiscal year 23 to 2028 CTP, uh, that MDOT presented last month, Calvert County is to receive funding for some of our highest priority projects that we've been asking for, for the last several years. For the next budget cycle, uh, which is fiscal year 24 to 29, the Departments of Planning and Zoning, Public Works, and Community Resource, Resources will continue to ask MDOT to support previously prioritized projects that remain underfunded or on hold. Staff will tailor the county's priority letter to include specific language and project goals to ensure they align with the state's current initiatives. The draft priority list is attached. Fiscal impact, none. Conclusions and recommendations, we're asking that the board review and discuss the draft priority list and, um, once the board has finalized the priority list, direct staff to move forward with updating the Calvert County Priority Project Letter. So, uh, attached, we had the CTP project priority letter. First, we have the underfunded, um, Thomas Johnson Bridge and Route Four, excuse me. Obviously, we don't have enough money, 2 million is what we got last year. Next, we will move to, um, the Maryland 2-4 Expansion Phases 3A, 3B, north of Fox Run to north of Stokely Road, uh, to conclude the widening project through Prince Frederick Town Center. And then we are asking for consideration for adaptive signal control technology in Prince Frederick and in Dunkirk. So just to go into that a little bit, currently, the lights are synchronized in Prince Frederick, but they have not been updated since the widening. So that was discussed when the state was here last month. That's something that they're working on, is updating that synchronization. We are asking for consideration for the newer technology to take, um, into consideration peak and non-peak hours. Then we have another outstanding priority for the roadwork and safety enhancements along the corridor just north of the Calvert County line at the intersection of Maryland 258 and the Maryland 4 intersection. And the next two priorities on the public, uh, published list, uh, which are improvements at Maryland 261 and Beach Drive and Maryland 260 at Harrison Boulevard, um, the Richfield Station intersection. After further review and discussion with the Department of Public, uh, Public Works, we believe our concerns at those intersections have been adequately addressed, adequately addressed, and we'd like to actually remove those from our list.
I was going to ask about Richfield Station because I know they put the light in, so I didn't know what else we were looking to do there, so.
No, we're recommending now to take those off the list.
Yes. Next, we have the Transit Transfer Station. In this past CTP, we received funding for a feasibility study. This year's letter, we're going to be asking for planning and design of the Transit Transfer Study. We are asking for some sidewalk extensions, um, on Main Street and that'll be between Old Field Road and Calvert Town Road, just to, uh, complete that sidewalk down Main Street. And another one that's, was on the previous list, we'd like to keep on our list, which is the Lesby Towner, Town Center Streetscape from Maryland 760, from east of Maryland 765 to west of Maryland 765, uh, just filling in gaps between developments already completed.
Very good.
So are there other items you want to add? Is, is this priority good? We're looking for your feedback.
I think we're good, it's everything we've talked about for the past two or three years. And I do want to take this time to publicly thank MDOT for adding Dunkirk to the signal light synchronization list. We threw that on at the last minute. Got an email, they are going to do that, so we appreciate that. But I don't think we have anything else to add to the list at this time.
Okay.
Think that's good.
Great.
Thank you.
Draft the letter.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me is Rachel O'Shea, our zoning planner, and, um, we're going to be going over some text amendments in preparation of tonight's joint public hearing. Rachel?
Good morning, Commissioners. The purpose of the first work session is to review and discuss the proposed text amendment 22-03 to allow possible cemetery accessory uses in preparation for this evening's joint public hearing. Background, a text amendment application was received in July from the Chesapeake Highlands Memorial Gardens. It requests to allow crematoriums and funeral homes as accessory uses to existing cemeteries. Prior to the zoning ordinance update in 2006, crematoriums and funeral homes were permitted by special exception in the district of what is now known as the Farm and Forest District.
I need to, uh, recuse myself from this discussion, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir. No, sir. Sorry.
This slide, uh, is a map showing the location of the Chesapeake Highlands Memorial Gardens. About, it's about half mile down off of Brooms Island Road from Route Four. This is the existing zoning ordinance use chart. It shows a crematorium, funeral home, and cemetery memorial garden, which currently is not allowed within the Farm and Forest District, but the crematorium, or the cemetery and memorial gardens is permitted. And this is the recommended, uh, change, to go back to allowing, um, crematoriums and funeral homes be permitted through a special exception approval, as long as the crematorium be an accessory to the funeral home and that the funeral home shall be accessory to existing public cemetery as of the adoption of this ordinance. Agency comments received include, um, comments from the county attorney's office recommending a definition be added to distinguish private versus public cemeteries. We did add a definition for public cemetery. A public cemetery is one used by the general community, a neighborhood, or a church, while private cemetery is used only by a family or small portion of the community. And that the actual public use, rather than the ownership, determines, determines whether cemetery is public or private. So the next step is moving to the joint public hearing this evening, if there's no questions.
Is there, oh, sorry. I do have a question. Does anyone recall why the change was made in 2006 to take that out?
There was a large update to the, um, entire zoning ordinance in May, that was adopted in May 2006. A lot of staff that is currently in the department was not here then, so we're not exactly sure, but it might have just got lost in.
So it very possibly was just.
An omission.
One small little blip and a huge.
Very possible.
Update or change.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was kind of borderline my question of, um, why the change. I mean, there's, is there something that, I mean, some type of disturbance or anything like that? I mean, to me, it just seems like it's just part of doing business.
Yeah.
And if I may, Mary Beth, please, um, the traditional form of burial has, has changed, in my opinion. There's more, um, cremations as opposed to the traditional.
I mean, that's what I'm doing, I'm, I'm having my organs donated if that poor soul would get, to get those, but, uh, getting cremated, I mean, that's, uh, yeah, so.
And I think technology has changed. I don't think it, you know, it holds the same stigma it might have years ago.
Okay. Just curious.
No, absolutely. Any further questions?
All right. We'll move on to the next one. Give Commissioner Hans some minute to come back.
Oh, and this one, um, I need to recuse myself.
Good morning again, Mary Beth Cook, still Director of Planning and Zoning. With me is Rachel O'Shea, zoning planner, and she's going to go over text amendment 22-04.
Good morning. The purpose of this work session is to review and discuss a proposed text amendment 22-04 to allow for cigar lounges within the Neighborhood Commercial Subdistrict of the Lesby Town Center in preparation for this evening's joint public hearing. Background, text amendment application was received in August from Mr. Lincoln Lawrence to request to allow for cigar lounges, cigar lounges within the Neighborhood Commercial Subdistrict of the Lesby, uh, Town Center. Currently, lounges are already permitted within the Village Commercial and Village Edge sub-districts of the Town Center. This is a map showing the proposed location of the cigar lounge. It's within a strip mall off of Town Square Drive behind the post office. And this is a map showing, um, the sub-districts of the Lesby Town Center. You can see the Neighborhood Commercial is kind of divided, um, in between the Village Commercial and Village Edge sub-districts. This is the current, uh, Lesby use chart. You can see down there at the bottom, Use 22 for Tavern, nightclub, lounge, dance hall, with a P for Village Commercial and Village Edge, but nothing so for the Neighborhood Commercial. And this is the proposed change to add a P for the Neighborhood Commercial, um, allowing tavern, nightclub, lounge, and dance halls be permitted within that sub-district. The Board of County Commissioners did request staff take a look at, um, seeing if it made sense to expand this use in the other town centers. Staff did take a look at all the other town centers where it, there's already a level of permitability and Lesby was actually the most restrictive, um, so there was no need to, to expand the use in the other town centers, but we did feel it was necessary to, um, move forward with, with the proposal. Agency comments received from the Calvert Health Department, Division of Environmental Health, clarifying that the Calvert Health Department, in cooperation with the Maryland Department of Health, enforces the Clean Air Act, CIAA. The CIAA prohibits smoking in indoor areas open to the public within, with, open to the public with the following exceptions, which includes retail tobacco business that is sole prioritar, prioritarship, limited liability company, corporation, partnership, or other enterprise in which I, the primary activity, is the retail sale of tobacco products and accessories, and double I, the sale of other products, is incidental. And so the next step is to move forward with the joint public hearing this evening, if there's no questions.
So what's the difference between Neighborhood Commercial and Village Commercial?
There, it's, it's divided by, usually by the category of uses found within that sub-district. Neighborhood Commercial is usually small business, um, but they are very similar. And as you can see with, from the, oops, I don't know how I did that. Going back to the, um, Lesby is kind of a, a, an interesting case because the Neighborhood Commercial is actually split into three separate pieces and it kind of encum, goes around Village Commercial. I don't know why that was done, but that, that's the way that it's always been. I think when we probably get to the Lesby Town Center, we'll be, definitely be taking a look of that, a look at that and seeing if that makes sense, um, with regarding with what uses are located there.
And, and if I may be so bold, um, could the, the question is, the, the zoning ordinance, could that be modified during that process as well? The new zoning ordinance?
Yes, well, when we do the update to the Town Center zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Yes.
That is when that takes.
Yes, and that's absolutely something we want to look at. A lot of the town centers are broken up into multiple sub-areas. We want to try to reduce the number of sub-areas if possible, when we get to that point.
I was just trying to figure out the difference between Neighborhood and Village Commercial.
I think, so, if you can see where the Village Commercial is, it has a Village Residential Office use behind it, or I guess to the east. I think it's somewhat of a buffer to the higher, um, larger type uses. So the Village Commercial is where the, um, center is that has the large Weiss in it and those might not necessarily be permitted in the Neighborhood Commercial as you get closer to residential. So you always have a core where the higher, larger uses are permitted and then the further out you get, um, lesser uses are permitted.
And we're, we're slightly digressing, but, uh, going back to the origin of the Lesby Town Center, um, I'm going to take a, hmm, probably 1993, 94-ish timeframe and that Village Commercial, um, is all that really existed at the time.
That's true.
You know, Giant was later.
Yes.
Weiss, so, and the Village Edge is what it is. I digress, I apologize.
No problem.
And that map is not accurate as far as time, correct?
It, it's an, it's an old map that was pulled when, um, the latest or the last rendition of the zoning ordinance was put together. So it, it is not a today aerial, no.
I was saying, it looks like in the, in the leftmost Neighborhood Commercial, that whole wooded area is now where the grocery store and all that is, just from my reference where I know everything's at.
And that's how old these maps are.
Right.
Yes.
I got it. Thank you.
We don't have newer maps?
We do, but these are recorded, so we would have to update it, go through a public hearing process to do so, and which we intend to do when we update the master plan and zoning ordinances, absolutely.
So I'm going to digress. So we're. So we're getting ready to legalize marijuana.
Thank you.
If somebody does a marijuana lounge, they're going to have to come in and get permission to do that?
It, that can be a whole discussion, another discussion we can have with the commissioners, but how we handle dispensaries today, medical dispensaries, is that we permit them anywhere you can have retail commercial. So retail commercial is a use, so it would be very easy to do the same for recreational marijuana, to permit them anywhere you allow retail commercial. Because it's sales.
You opened the door and, I mean, no, John?
Yes, sir.
If I could be so bold with you, sir, we have not received any legislative direction because the bills, I mean, the meat of the matter is forthcoming.
The referendum just passed this November, so it's not going to be effective till July 1. It's certainly going to be one of the first things the legislature is looking at in Indianapolis, how to tax it and then how to place it.
And there is an item, a presentation being done at Winter Mako on that exact question, how to zone for recreational marijuana, so I plan to attend.
And I'm really digressing. I had a conversation with a senator years ago and I think they're going to take best practices from the states that have already passed the recreational piece. So they're going to take strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, the Swoop, you know, mantra, so.
Yeah, I digress.
Any other questions?
Okay, we'll see you tonight at the public hearing.
Do you have one more?
Two more.
Two more.
Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. Today we are going to be going over the adequate public facilities requirements that we're proposing and will be discussing at the joint public hearing this evening. So currently, the Calvert County zoning ordinance is where the regulations exist for schools and roads and the language from section 7-105 is on the screen. So in 1988, the Adequate Public Facilities Regulations were adopted and were actually contained in the subdivision regulations from 1988 to 2002. Then in 2003, they were adopted in the zoning ordinance and remain there today. Amendments for Adequate Public Facilities for Schools were done in 2003, 2008, and 2018, and there have also been minor edits done for the Adequate Public Facilities for Roads. Currently, these, the Adequate Public Facilities for Schools only applies to residential development, but, and it will continue to only be for residential development, but now that we're going to be adding additional categories for Adequate Public Facilities, those will be applied to non-residential developments such as commercial, industrial, and institutional. In 2019, when the Comprehensive Plan was adopted, there was an action to expand Adequate Public Facilities Regulations to include sewer, water, storm drain, solid waste, public safety, and representation for the sheriff's office, law enforcement. So we are going to review and discuss the proposed amendments prior to tonight's joint public hearing. The existing Adequate Public Facilities Regulations, which I said were for schools and roads, will be removed from the zoning ordinance as, and is shown in your attachments as text amendment 22-05. So we are deleting those and providing a reference to the new, what will be the new Chapter 3 of the county code. Any new regulations adopted will become a part of the development review process. So once the Adequate Public Facilities Requirements get adopted, they will be done by each individual agency as part of either the subdivision or the commercial development review process. If any one of the existing or proposed categories is found to be inadequate, the development cannot start construction until capacity becomes adequate. So the Adequate Public Facilities for Schools, the current regulations specify that schools are adequate when all public elementary and secondary schools, which will serve the proposed residential subdivision or residential development, will accommodate the pupil yield from that residential subdivision or development without exceeding 100% of the rated capacity of any of those schools. So the Department of Planning and Zoning twice a year does an analysis in cooperation with Calvert County Public Schools, and then we release a report in April and November on the status of the schools, whether they're open, they're closed, and whether or not subdivisions can be recorded. That hold, if there is a subdivision proposed in an area that, where a school is closed, they, that subdivision cannot be recorded for six years, which is consistent with our CIP, so that if an additional school would need to be built, we'd have time to accommodate that. We are proposing no changes to the school portion of the Adequate Public Facilities Regulations.
The remedy doesn't necessarily mean that we build another school. Remedy could be redistricting where they move students from schools that are under capacity.
That's correct.
Commissioners, if I, if I may, Mark Wells, County Administrator, that's a true statement, sir, but that's Board of Education. I just want the citizens to know that that's not on this board.
Right.
Although you can communicate that, but you can't direct that.
And I wanted to insert exactly because as Commissioner Hans said, that's, they have been very resistant to doing that as in the past. So county attorney, six years goes by. You've seen the pressure put on the northern part of the county for the schools. That came up front us in my last board. They say, okay, well, you've got six years. The Board of Ed says, well, no, we're not going to redistrict it, then what?
So the six years is put in because it's one of the longer periods where you can delay without causing a violation of the federal constitution for taking without just compensation, but also understanding you have no jurisdiction over the towns and the towns do not have the same Adequate Public Facilities for Schools provisions that the county does. So while you may stop county development, you would not stop development within the towns without them changing how they do business.
So six years goes by and even if the Board of Ed doesn't change anything, they still-
It must be approved or the-
So would this be the point to where, where I, I'm sorry, I'm just a fan of every business is responsible for his footprint. I subscribe to it in my own business. Would that be where at this point we would insert that, or is that something completely different?
I'm not sure I understand.
So, so I build, I build a, something that generates 100 additional cars and maybe the roads can support it and the water and sewer can support it, but the school can't. And Commissioner Williams can correct me, I believe the 90s was the one school a year decade? And now all of a sudden, you know, our portion, before the cost of goods went crazy, somewhere was hovering around $35 million. So now all of a sudden taxpayers are going to put on a $35 million bill. The teachers it takes to do that, the custodians, the everything that comes involved with this and the cost to the business that's incurring this extra expenses. Hey, I worked within your rules and this is what it said, so guess what? I want my money, see you later. And we've seen that and that's been told to my face. So what is our recourse of recuperating some of that money so that the taxpayers don't eat a potential 40, 50 million dollar expense because somebody wants to build 200 homes?
Well, the six years is a constitutional pressure relief valve that after which they would be permitted to go forward without contributing to the school. The county could take a different position and say that we're just not going to ever approve it. We'll provide you legal advice on whether or not that could lead to a successful constitutional challenge that you've now taken their property without compensating them for it. But six to seven years has been what the, but the Supreme Court has generally said is an acceptable time that you can make somebody wait without it being a taking that has to be compensated.
Can a bill be put in for expenses to make this school happen?
So, I don't know that that is-
I don't know if that's correct terminology, but I mean, it's just, it's just unfair to, and I, look, I, I'm not about taking money out of somebody's pocket, but I'm not a, I'm not a fan of somebody costing somebody some money either. You know, I mean, as much as a person wouldn't want to be damaged by our action, the taxpayer shouldn't be damaged by somebody else's action. That's just fair play. And so the six years, I get it and I understand it, but like I say, I mean, I, I think the big coming to Jesus meeting with me is when a guy looked me right in the face and said, I want my money and I don't care. And I mean, I really broke it down to me, I was like, wow. You know, we all talk on the surface how much we love the county and we love this, that, and the other, but not when it comes to that pocketbook. When it comes to that wallet, that's out the door and pay me, but I don't want my taxpayers to have to eat it.
There are two ways to impose fees or taxes on a development. The county currently has an excise tax that you impose on each new residential unit where they contribute towards schools, recreation, and roads. That number can be modified with public hearing. There is also the opportunity, which does not require state legislation, to impose an impact fee. As long as you can draw a direct nexus between where that fee is collected and how it's spent, you don't need state legislation to impose a regulatory fee.
Can that be individualized though? Because sometimes with these things, you know, you say, well, you put this fee in and the guy's going, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute. All we need for this to happen is I need a fence and the fee's here. Is there, is there a way to where, okay, if you hit this category, the fee may be this, but if you hit that category, it could be that? Is that, is that legal?
Mary Beth and Carrie can probably speak better to when the fees are imposed. I don't think you pay a residential impact fee for a fence.
No, but I'm using as an example, I mean, right, something very miniscule opposed to, you know, something could be small is having to put in acceleration lane or deceleration lane opposed to building a school.
And I don't think that if you had a geographically limited regulatory fee, that it would necessarily pass muster, but it's something we could research for the board.
And I also wanted to talk about the November 2022 Adequate Public Facilities for Schools is out and there's only one elementary school closed, and that's as a direct result of transfer students. So, I mean, I know that we started doing that analysis at the request of the Board of County Commissioners several years ago to show the rest of the schools are closing in on 90%. I don't think it's going to never say never, but it's that one school and the transfers that are causing the problems currently.
So go back in time when Patuxent High School was brand new, trailers were out back.
Immediately.
It was supporting the rest of the county and the, the notion was, well, we're building these other schools, we're trying to keep up. Once they got there and those kids now were put out there, then just what you say came into play, all the different transfer stuff. Transfers are there for a reason, people's workplace, things of that nature.
Take care.
I get that, but that wasn't what the case was on a lot of these things. And then, and in my direct, back then, conversation with the Board of Ed, I was told plain and simple, you don't get to make that call. And I said, well, how do you take a kid on Dears Beach Road and shoot him up the road? How do you take a kid out of White Sands and go to school down south, you know, at Appeal, at Southern, and then you yank half of them up there? So that has been, but I don't, I haven't seen the numbers recently where Patuxent is opposed to where Huntington Northern is, but I remember even on my first board, we had to vote down past 100% back then, so we're here.
Yeah, and I can get you a copy of the report and it's also available online on the Planning and Zoning website.
Yeah, I remember Calvert had some space and Patuxent had some space, but I just don't remember what the margin was.
No, all three high schools that currently have space.
Really?
Yes.
Good.
And the last thing I wanted to mention is that this does not apply to minor subdivisions, which is seven lots or less, it's only major subdivisions. And I'll turn it over to Carrie for notes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carrie Dahl, Director of Public Works. Okay, so what we did here, as you can see, the current status talks about maintaining a level of service of C, except in the town centers where D is acceptable. What we've tried to do is shape this to where we're actually talking about the approach lanes and a method, the highway capacity method, to actually shaping how we get to a level of service now. Right now, we still have the C basically generally outside of the town centers, but we get to a level of service D within the town centers. And then we've taken the calculations of each lane, lane approach of any roadway already operating of service of E before the impacts, then we're talking about being able to mitigate that down. Now, I know that you're not a fan of level of service D, but I will say that most of those level of service D areas that we are currently talking about, we're talking about those being state highway roads at signalized intersections within the town centers. And must, much, much of that will have to be done as far as a collaborative effort with the state highway to actually mitigate those down if it's capable to mitigate those down. But I'm not saying that, you know, it can't be done. I would have to look into it, actually collaborate with state highway to actually make that happen. Okay, to get to that.
One of the things that Commissioner Hart has said that has rung through many, many times with me, when a constituent comes to me or a taxpayer comes to me and says, hey, I got this problem with this road. And if we sit there and say, but that's a state road, the person comes back and says, but you're my representative, and those, that comes from Mike, and I'm reiterating it.
I totally agree, sir, and we actively engage with state highway quarterly to, to address those concerns and those issues. We do it all the time.
And, and, but, but what I think is, is if we're looking at a project and we say, okay, the, the, the existing area is already a D, then that kills it right there. I know we can't force the state to bring it up to a C level or B level, but if we're looking at it on our end and say, well, they're already at a D and now we're just going to add more pressure to it, that, my 20%, that should just kill it right there. So I don't even put it in the state's hands to, to make that call.
I don't disagree with you, sir.
And because of the shape of our county and the way our road system works, every road leads to a state road.
Understood, yes, sir.
And while, while, you know, we can't completely control what the state does, it would give us extra leverage when we make our arguments for our priorities that we have these intersections that are failing, you know.
Yes, sir.
Need to be improved, so it's somewhat about leverage, trying to get the state to move.
Agreed.
But, I mean, at the end of the day, as I said, everything comes out to a state road, so we can't say, well, throw our hands up.
Correct, I mean, I, I don't think you end there. That's obviously not the way it should be. We should collaborate and try to get what we need out of those, those, those meetings and those interactions with them. But what, the other thing that we added to this is we talked about impact studies. So right now, currently, it's a requirement to have 400, you know, traffic movements per whatever the time period is. We're reducing that to number 250. So what we want to do is basically require more impact studies when we actually do a development. So we're not, we're going to lower that threshold from 400 to 250 to increase the amount we're doing so we get a better look, because normally it wouldn't trip until you talked about 400 trips being a concern. So we're going to increase the frequency on that. And then, of course, we talked about the E and the F. Anything is inadequate if it's an E or F within Calvert County and we would like to see that mitigated after a wave from that E and F and get it back to a D if we can make that happen.
And I think our goal in all this was that, at least in my time, Mr. Williams has much more time than I do. I've yet to see an impact study come back and say there was an impact. And when we see them dumping 500 cars on these little two-lane roads and I just can't get through my head that there's no impact.
And sir, I will tell you that my staff and myself have been challenging some of those impact studies that they've come in, the ones that we have seen as they have come in and said, there is no impact. And then we basically take them the task on that to make it, make them prove why that's the case, so.
And I say, I mean, that's our goal in making these changes. So whatever we need to do to get that facilitated, I think, is where we're trying to get to.
Yes, sir, understood. I'll go ahead and move along. Okay, public sewer. This one right here, there are already design thresholds required by the state, Maryland Department of the Environment. When you exceed 80% over a three-year period, okay, that you then have to basically get into a design piece where you've actually increased the capacity. That is a requirement that already exists. However, what we did here is that we enumerated 90% as in, anything above 90% is considered to be inadequate. And the reason that we have 90% there is because we felt that enumerating was a requirement. I've seen, and I've stated this before, I've- uh, and I've stated this before, I've seen counties go as high as ninety-five percent and I've seen uh, counties talk about, talk around what the actual number is, uh, as far as what it is. So this is black and white. It's ninety percent is deemed inadequate. And eighty percent actually kicks us into a design threshold, uh, to act, that's a requirement for state. And again, that's a three-year average. I will make a note that this is the number I briefed to you guys now on three separate occasions and the planning commission once. I will note that, uh, the document that's actually listed, uh, the APF, uh, adequate public cities ordinance actually has it listed as eighty percent that is incorrect. I'm just telling you that it's at ninety percent right here. Okay, is what I briefed you the last three different times.
I thought the last time we were briefed, I thought we mentioned and, and talked about the eighty percent.
We did talk about the eighty percent, sir. And we did talk about the fact that it was a design threshold that is required by the Maryland Department of the Environment that automatically pushes us into a capacity increase requirement that we must use to actually, to increase the capacity of that wastewater treatment plant.
At eighty, you've gotta start design.
Right.
At ninety, you've gotta start implementation.
Correct. So, uh, so if I used an example, we're already redesigning Prince Frederick. Okay, and we're doing that on purpose and we're well below the eighty percent threshold at this time to actually begin that.
So John, let me ask you something. This brings up a great example. So now certain development comes in and says, hey, I want to do X, Y, Z. And you say, well, you can't. And he says, I'll wait my six years. And you say, well, because we don't have the sewer capacity. Could they be forced to have to pay for the expansion of that sewer capacity so they can handle their own project?
The way we have the ordinance proposed today, they would have the ability to pay for that expansion or wait the six years.
So they wait the six years out and say, nope, I'm not gonna pay for it. You have to pay for it.
Well, except they are gonna pay for it because they still have to buy the tap.
Well, yeah, they, but they do the, um.
Self-supporting system, so.
Yeah, they, and they, um, help me, what's the?
Enterprise fund.
EDUs, they do the EDUs. I, I get that, but the EDUs are a far cry for the cost of that new facility.
Not in the agri- it shouldn't be in the aggregate.
And not in the water, but I'm talking about in the sewer.
Sir, there's an initial, uh, hookup charge, if you want to call it that, right? And then there is a fixed rate charge that is quarterly billed that, uh, basically accounts for each EDU that they've signed up for as well as a variable cost for their consumption. So the, it, it is a, it is an a, essentially a startup cost and then an operations and maintenance cost that is sustained throughout the life of that EDU.
And that's gonna pay for the cost of the new facility?
It is designed by that to make it an enterprise fund and make it a nonprofit, if you will, uh, operating of that, uh, plant and the entire system.
I he- I hear you. I knew my, what my EDUs were down there and I think that's a far cry of what building costs are and I know what my water bill is. In fact, I even know what the shopping center's water bill is roughly and that's a far cry from paying for that facility, but uh.
It's, it's over a period of time, sir. I'll just say that. And so it's, it's not just, I mean, if you're hooked up for ten years, you're, you're paying for ten years. If you're twenty, thirty years, you're still paying for those.
I guess.
And remember, those who are paying into the systems are the ones that are using the system.
I've been paying it for thirteen years and, and I, and I don't ac- I access one. But that's just, you know, how it came with it, you know what I mean? That was so, but when I, when I think of the cost of an expansion of, of a sewer treatment facility, I think in the millions, obviously.
Correct.
And if the threshold to push that over, say, was a five hundred unit facility, say, push that over. Boy, that's a long time to recoup that money.
It is, and I will tell you that there are ways to get those, uh, costs offset by, uh, through grants and.
Right, 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 but, 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 but now we're having the government do private businesses' job, see? Then going back to my statement was you are responsible for your footprint. So if, if the government has to go and say, well, we're gonna do, you know, set projects gonna come through, we'll do grants, we'll do late work. Every time you guys move a pencil, that, that meter's running. See, people forget that too. You know, it's not just the private guy out there, the engineer who costs money. You know, staff costs money as well. And then that's when the next year the request comes in, well, we need more staffing because of X, Y, Z. I mean, it's all dominoes, right? So, you know, um, that's why I say, I, I, I hear you. And not that I don't believe you, but I just know that if, if say a five hundred unit, uh, or even a thousand pushed it over at the top, I don't know, that's enough units to recoup millions of dollars, not including the upkeep. And then there's the, the, the pumps that go bad and everything else that goes with that. That just sounds good on paper. Say, well, you know, they're gonna pay for their own thing, but, but are they? I mean, it's my question. Maybe they are, but that's why I'm just asking a question.
And, and sir, through the permitting process, you'll figure out how many EDUs are actually gonna be charged for that development site and whether that would push us across that threshold. And we would have that before we entered it into any type of public works agreement or anything like that, that nature that would actually trigger us to actually then begin that. Again, this is a three-years, three-year repeated requirement of eighty percent that would then cause us to get into redesign. And obviously we could, uh, then measure it when it came, whether it would even get close to ninety based on the actual permitting of those developments.
Well, at the, at today, though, if that pushed you over that regulation today, the only recourse you have at the end of six years is just go ahead and do it and go back to the, I mean, to the general fund. Well, you'd have to go on CIP, you'd have to go borrow the money. And then, I mean, but initial be general fund usage to pay that up, that startup cost. You don't have enough in EDUs upfront to cover that.
It's an enterprise fund, so they'd make, borrow the money.
Right.
And pay it back.
Yes, sir.
And you had said that we're well below, when we were talking about the eighty percent, a few minutes ago, you said that we were well below the eighty percent.
Yes, sir, we are.
And it's been quite a few months, but we are well into the seventies. Am I correct?
We were sixty-eight point one when I briefed you the last time.
Okay. And before that, it was seventy-one, so.
I, I will tell you though, I have information that you do not though. Okay? So, I'll just flat out tell you now that, uh, uh, we, we are below sixty percent in actual, uh, flow for Prince Frederick. I'll just tell you that right now. In fact, most of the plans, all the plans are below sixty percent. Uh, and the reason I say that is if you go back and it's year-to-date, we went back and did the math and did the analysis. I can actually give you a briefing on this if you'd like in detail. But, uh, at the end of the day, it, it turns out that we're well below sixty, we're below sixty percent. And if you compare it, people are back at work now. They're not at home and they're not, uh, teleworking and things of that nature. That's the only thing that we can account for right now, but we are currently well below that sixty percent threshold. We're below sixty-eight percent right now when it comes to flow in Prince Frederick.
Did you say below sixty eight or below sixty?
Sixty, six zero. I don't, I mean, look, when I looked at it, I was like amazed that the numbers were down.
We've done some, sorry, go ahead.
I was amazed at the numbers, so we dug in a little bit further. And the only thing that we came up with is that people are back at work now and they're not at home.
They are. You can see it on the roads. I mean, I, I, you, you can see it daily that they're, it's back to.
They are not using, and we have correlating data with the water systems as well, where the consumption is down as well. So it's, uh, we're, we're well below where we were. I've seen stuff, uh, decrease by six hundred thousand gallons in some places. It's, it's, it's crazy, but it's, it's true.
If we were pre, if we were pre-co- and I'm digressing, but I, I'm trying to wrap my head around what you just said. If we were pre-COVID at say sixty-eight and during COVID we went to say sixty-nine, and I'm not quoting these numbers exact, post-COVID, how could we drop to fifty-nine? I don't, I don't get it.
When I presented those nu- presented those numbers to you in April.
Right.
Okay, I looked at twenty-one and twenty-two, it was sixty-six and sixty-eight percent respectively for twenty-one and twenty-two, April year-to-date, okay? When I went back and I just looked at the numbers from October, I, I gotta remember the exact number. I don't have it right on hand. I looked at it yesterday, but it's like somewhere in the neighborhood of like fifty-six, fifty-eight percent. And I'm, I'm just being honest with you, for the same wastewater treatment plants and it correlates with the corresponding water data, we're down. We're not even close to.
We saw more of a movement in six months than we did over the previous.
Well, that's because you're measuring it year-to-date.
Ten years?
But you're measuring it year-to-date based on, because if you look at twenty to twenty-one, twenty-one to twenty-two, those are all the COVID dates that people were actually home.
But you had, you had the chart up over the previous ten years worth of service.
Correct, sir. But you also notice on that one chart there, it actually went down several years ago. Okay, it actually spiked down by several thousand, a hundred gallons. I can present the data to you in more detail, sir.
Another day.
Yes, sir, I will.
Right. I'd love, I'd love to. Thank you.
I think it's fascinating that it, that it actually went down and, uh, I'd be more than happy to show it to you.
So we do that another day. Today is more about moving forward.
Absolutely.
Triggers.
Sorry to digress on there and there, but I felt that.
That's just, that's amazing.
It's easy.
And I'll, I'll pull up the spreadsheet as soon as I can get that. But anyway, uh, so this is for sewer. Ninety percent is the, considered to be adequate, inadequate. Uh, same thing, we correlated it with the water. Ninety percent is considered to be inadequate. Okay, and that for all the water systems that we run in Calvert County. So storm drain, uh, essentially without reading this to you, uh, it has to be the same it would be if it was, so if I'm taking undeveloped land with grass, with trees and everything, when I get done with that, I still have to be able to handle the water and make it the same, that, 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 that flow has to be no, no more, no, no higher than what it currently is right now. And that's essentially what we're talking about. We're talking about adjacent lots, so on and so forth. And this all gets done by the engineers in their review process. Okay, that's essentially just putting it in writing.
So there was some comment about because of climate change, storms are changing, we have bigger flows at certain times. When does that, how does that, how do they, I know you're using an analysis. How, when do they, how often do they update that analysis for the numbers, that factors that you're using?
If I remember correctly, it's Atlas fourteen that we're using. State is still using data that is from like the nineteen fifties or sixties, but they're actually updating that to what we're currently using as the monitoring of those flows. And until a further, uh, we'll say comprehensive, uh, publication is actually published by the Department of the Environment, then we're gonna go, go ahead and the one that's actually the codified document that we're using.
And that's from twenty fourteen?
Yes, it's from twenty fourteen. So that's, that's the best we got at the moment. And as soon as they update it to a, a, a more modern version, we will then begin using that one as well. But that, that, those are the documents that we have, so those are the documents that we're using. We're standardizing it that way. All right. Okay, solid waste. This is all based on the transfer station and the capacity of the transfer station moving so many thousands of tons of, 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 of solid waste out. And right now, anything, as long as it remains below seventy percent, we believe we're in a good position as far as, uh, having that. Gentlemen, subject to your questions on any of the stuff that I presented, that's all that I have.
So I think the only real question that we has was changing the level of service of those intersections from.
Understood, sir. And what would you like on that one?
C.
You would like a C? But that would be extensive, as you, as we've discussed.
We understand that.
Collaboration with the state.
We understand that.
Okay, sir.
Just so there's clarity in the scene, I think that it is a consensus amongst us.
And it would need to be brought up tonight at the hearing to physically go on record and make a change.
I don't think anybody's gonna oppose that.
I doubt it.
Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we talked, uh, Mark Bullis, County Administrator, we talked about the priorities as, uh, we see them today that we would present to state. Uh, it could be, we could have further discussions as we put, as we finalize that letter to make sure that maybe one of our priorities is to have a state road-wide analysis of any road that is D or higher and what the state can help us do about it into the future. Because unless we identify that as one of our major concerns, it's never gonna be one of their major concerns. We can point to a road and say that we want to widen it only because we want to widen it for whatever reason, but if we want to, uh, a focus on it being a level D or E or F and it's a state road, that we identify those as a priority to fix for us going forward and we just list it in that letter until they do it.
Cause I think the last one was done in twenty sixteen. I think it was the last engineered study I saw from state highway was twenty sixteen.
It, it may have been, sir, but you know, that's based on their own studies. I think we, we send this to the director of the, or the Secretary of Transportation as a direct request on our letter and we get them to focus on it from that perspective.
And we do need to take into account when they do those, that they look at the topography because I think we've got a bypass running through the middle of a major wetlands area that I'm not sure we want to tackle. So it just seems um, inefficient to say we're gonna build this bypass through, you know, and that ain't gonna happen. You know, we should be realistic in what we're projecting to do moving forward. I mean, I know it looks good on a map, say, yep, we're gonna do this, it'll bypass, but in reality, that, we're not gonna do that, so.
And, and I realize we're actually covering two different discussions up your head today, but the reality is if we look at what it would cost for us to put that road through that area you just spoke of, that's not a necessarily state contribution. Uh, there could be some, but not necessarily.
I did digress, but.
But if you take that same money that we would spend and maybe.
Talking about us, right.
Yes, yes, sir. And propose that level of financial, uh, contribution to assist with the state in getting our roads down to what we want. Maybe that's a, a catalyst for getting it moving forward at the state level.
It's us, but I believe when the state did their study, the last study that they did, they took into account what we had said we were gonna do, which I don't think we're gonna do. So I'm just trying to be realistic and when we look at.
America's looking for something to do, so I'm sure she'll dig into that.
I can add that to the list. And, and that is a loop road, not a bypass. So, yeah, it's, it is unrealistic.
You wanna scare everybody?
It's like a neighborhood business and village business, you know, or commercial.
Absolutely.
So the only other thing is that if you could get those current flow numbers to us.
Absolutely.
So we have the same information that you have.
Yes, sir, I can do that.
Thank you. We might not need a full presentation, but just the information.
Understood, sir.
Any other questions?
Okay, next, we have public safety. Jim Richardson.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Richardson, Department of Public Safety Fire Rescue EMS Division Chief. Uh, gonna cover today the, uh, fire and emergency medical services EMS. Uh, our primary goal is to provide high-quality fire and EMS to the citizens in a timely manner. The, uh, adequacy for this purpose would be to determine, uh, response time statistics measuring the time between when a resource is dispatched until they arrive on the scene. Uh, response times are typically in direct relation to a distance from a fire and EMS station. Uh, given the rural demographics of the county, response times can also be affected by the availability of resources, particularly times when EMS service demands are excessive and/or we have a significant wait times to transfer patients at the local hospitals. Um, service, uh, response criteria would be considered adequate if these standards are met. Um, next slide. Uh, each fire and EMS company's response areas are sectioned into sub-areas that we call boxes. Uh, these box areas are in direct relation, again, to the distance from the particular incident uh, from the company station. Uh, there are six main service areas divided into ninety-two boxes, anywhere from ten to about twenty-six sub-boxes for each of those areas. Uh, the criteria that are be to, are, would be applied to the development of commercial, institutional, uh, industrial and major subdivisions. Um, additional consideration could be made if a development were to provide EMS services, uh, for example, senior or skilled nursing where there would be a higher service demand. Uh, in addressing emergency medical service response times to first do these sub-areas known as boxes areas, the development, uh, proposed would be as follows. Uh, EMS response time to a box where development is proposed for basic life support with, uh, a unit with, equipped with an AED would be within ten-minute response time to at least ninety percent of the incidents dispatched measured on an annual basis. Uh, the response time, EMS response time for a, a unit providing advanced life support services would be again, ten minutes within at least ninety percent of the incidences, uh, measured on an annual basis. Uh, the meeting of the ninety percent time threshold comes from, uh, working with our partners in technology services, GIS, mapping, uh, for each of the fire department's first two areas. And almost, almost exclusively, all the areas are within ten minutes of a posted, uh, we use the posted speed limit plus ten miles per hour as a, as a factor. Um, from the station to the outskirts of all the areas is almost within ten minutes with a, with a few, few exceptions. And those, uh, are in low population density, low, um, call density areas. Next slide. Next slide. The response for fire would be the same criteria, with the exception of it would be the initial company arrival would be measured. The fire would be, again, ten minutes within at least ninety percent of the incidents dispatched, measured annually. And an additional criteria for fire would be fire flow and duration. We currently have in the county's Fire Prevention Code, Chapter forty-four, Section fifteen, water supply is where development would be, there's fire flow and durations marked for those. And that would be unless you have, have any questions for the fire and EMS section.
So my question's the same as it's been all along, I don't know how we use this as a determination of approval for a project.
So if we do an analysis, however many times a year they decide to do it, and they come to the review of a development, and it's going to exceed that, then it's inadequate. So if we're not meeting the ninety percent, then it's deemed inadequate until it becomes adequate or the six years passes.
This one's going to be a real challenge.
Yeah.
We're currently working, you, you, you receive response statistics on a monthly basis for the major box areas, and we've been spending a lot of time with the software development to do it in the subsections. And hopefully we'll have that wrapped up pretty soon. In, in the major population density areas, it's, it's not an issue in the further away. The other factor comes into call volume and usage. I'll give you an example, yesterday morning, we probably had six calls simultaneously, four or five of which were in the, actually, I think all six were between St. Leonard's and Solomon's. I mean, literally, it was just unbelievable. And then the, the ER wait times and Calvert Health Medical Center is very good at working to do this, but it's not unusual that you're, you're waiting a significant amount of time to offload a patient. And it could be upwards of over an hour where an EMS unit's waiting. And, and like I said, again, I'll give credit to Calvert Health as being very good, but it's a, it's a systemic problem across the country right now.
Jim, you bring up a great point that I had forgotten about, and you're spot on. People think that ambulance rolls in and it's drop off and go get the next, and you're absolutely right. The wait time, and I'm not putting this on the hospital.
Right.
But the wait time, and even with law enforcement, when law enforcement brings someone over, I've heard, and I'm not kidding you, eight to ten hours in some incidents that law enforcement's sitting there with somebody. And that comes into play, going back, I said earlier today, I know when we're talking about, like, there's a shortage of nurses, things of that nature, it's, it's, and all these things come into play. Commissioner Hans is exactly right, I don't know how you put that into verbiage when you're putting it on a document where this is, this is part of your ordinance, because, I mean, you, you know firsthand, I mean, you're driving ambulance up there, and you've got three more calls to get to, but you can't leave.
Exactly. And, and we go to a great, a great degree, excuse me, a great degree to continue to monitor all the hospitals, and it wouldn't be unusual for in the southern end of the county to go to St. Mary's and, or into the northern end of the counties. But we'll, we'll have factors where, obviously, if we're doing that, and that's a common practice, and it's, and it's acceptable that the urban areas are bringing patients into Calvert County to the point where.
And I've heard that especially a lot during COVID, and I don't know how you, so to speak, regulate that. I mean, because they are a private business, you know, they're not a county business. So I don't know how you say, well, who you take and who you don't take, and.
Our, it all become, goes under COMAR Title thirty as far as for EMS operations. So we have the ability to place the hospital and reroute, which would mean that, that we would, if we, if we have patients waiting.
Right, you could be going to Anaronda or PG or whatever, but once again, that goes back into that. People think, okay, well, the ambulance hits that hospital door, now they're routed back to somewhere else, and that's just not the case.
No, most of the time, no.
Yeah, and that's, and I hate sounding this way, but all these things matter.
And a lot of it's not able to be predicted. I think a lot of times, the, the Monday after a holiday, a major holiday is usually busy, families in, in the town. But again, we're dealing with emergencies, because, so you can't necessarily predict when somebody's going to fall or have a heart attack or something like that. So, you know, it's, I can certainly say that daytime's a lot busier than nighttime. People are up and more active, but as far as, it's a flip of a coin sometimes, you know. I mean, I could say right now, we could have no calls, or we could have six going on right now. I didn't have a chance to look before I came up, but.
Well, Solomon's is doing what, roughly twelve a day?
Easily, yeah.
So, I mean, there you go. So, so if that's twelve ambulances call, ambulance calls, how many ambulances do they have?
Three.
Are they active twenty-four hours a day, those three?
Yeah, and, and what's, it's, and I can't put my finger on it, but they all come in.
Oh, it always, it's always in bunches, I mean, it's always like that, it's never spaced out, you know.
No.
Monday at nine for one, and then at eleven for another, I mean, it's all, like you say, six at the same time.
Right.
And all these things, you know, come into play, and hence why we're talking about it today. And really, this discussion probably needed to happen twenty years ago when we were building schools all the time like that. Somebody should have pulled the crystal ball out and go, well, this is great, but then what?
Well, and, and when asked to come up with some degree of measurement for inadequate public facilities, I guess response time comes into mind. I, I, you know, if someone's having a heart attack right here in this room, if I'm having a heart attack, I, I don't care what ambulance shows up outside.
Oh, sure.
What department it's from, I want it here now.
But here's the thing with that, okay, great, right, ambulance gets there, because hospital, then what? I mean, riding the back's great, and we got a lot of facilities, this is not the same ambulance that was your grandfather's ambulance. I get that.
Right.
But the, but the tools and the machinery they need is inside that big building.
Well, and, and in most cases, with our ambulances with advanced life support, where we're providing.
They're remarkable, they are remarkable, they are like many hospitals, Rod, and I've heard other great things. But, you, I mean, some things require that big concrete building.
Exactly.
You know, and the more people you put out there, I mean, if you got five people, you got five chances. If you got fifty, you got fifty.
Right.
And that's just the purpose of this whole discussion, is that, in my book, we're already there. I mean, you know, everybody keeps trying to find some loophole, well, you know, if we jockey this around, you're already there. So it's how not to make the next generation hate living here. How do we protect this way of life that, that we've enjoyed? You know, and, and anybody wants to push back on that is, hey, everybody's got their own opinion, but to me, the quality of life trumps it all.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jim.
I went too far.
No, it's over, good, okay.
I'm going to need some help. Next up is Stanley Harris with the nine-one-one. Could we go to slide seventeen, please?
Good morning, Commissioner, Stanley Harris, Division Chief, Emergency Communications.
Morning.
Like we discussed the last time we presented this, this proposed amendment isn't, isn't one that you can take like Public Works, where you're, you're looking ahead of time to say this is going to impact this way. This is really after the fact, similar to the fire and rescue proposed amendments, where we're going to look after the fact and do an analysis to see what the impact was, to see if we're still adequately staffed. So we used national organizations that have staffing models as our recommendation. We're recommending that the nine-one-one center is considered adequately staffed when they're approved, full-time equivalents, assigned to take nine-one-one calls and dispatch emergency responders, meets or exceeds the FTEs recommended by the National Emergency Number Association or NINA Staffing Tool, as amended from time to time. And the second recommendation is outlined in COMAR, but we want to memorialize that in the Calvert County Ordinance, and that's the Calvert, the county has sufficient number of call takers and equipment to consistently answer incoming calls on a daily average of ten seconds or less. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Captain Parrott for Law Enforcement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brent Parrott with the Sheriff's Office. As presented before, to garner our information, we use a deputy sworn staff ratio to a thousand residents of one point five. That information was garnered at a previous staffing study. With those, with that formula, at this time, there's no identified commercial data to assist with this recommendation. The Calvert County Government continues to receive residential, commercial development applications, data used to determine whether the above law enforcement ratio to population can only be gathered upon the completion of the projects and occupancy. As it stands now, we are at adequate staffing levels. Using this particular formula would necessitate one hundred and thirty-eight sworn deputies within our agency. We currently are sitting at about one hundred and sixty-eight, and that gives us about a ratio of one point eight two deputies per thousand residents. That does include our court deputies. We include those because if we have a significant event, whether it's a weather event or critical incident, we can implement those folks into whatever we do, because they are sworn deputy sheriffs. Last year, twenty twenty-one, we ran approximately seventy-four thousand calls for service. I'm sorry, service. And the last time Commissioner Hans, you had asked about a response time, that's something we'd have to work on, there's so many different variables, as mentioned, with emergency services, that we would need to come to that conclusion with that data would be. It's really all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so if you have any other questions, otherwise, we will see you at the joint public hearing this evening.
See you tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Aren't you still there?
I'm still here.
Psych.
Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. Joining me now is Jenny Plummer Welker, our Long Range Planner, to discuss the public hearing the Commissioners are holding tonight at six-thirty regarding the reduction of town center expansions that were proposed in the adopted Calvert County Comprehensive Plan.
Good morning.
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 Is it still there?
Good afternoon.
Oh, good afternoon.
It is noon. Jenny Plummer Welker, Long Range Planner with Calvert County Planning and Zoning, and the clicker is hiding. Thank you. So tonight is the scheduled public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan. We held work sessions with you at your request in June. And so I'm going to briefly go through the slides, and I'll probably spend a little more time this evening on them, because we'll probably have a larger audience. But the steps, I want to review briefly the steps in the adoption process to change the county comprehensive plan. The Board of County Commissioners are scheduled to hold the public hearing this evening. And then at the conclusion of the oral testimony, you have a decision to make whether to keep the record open, and if so, for how long, or to close the record that night. After that decision, you can then discuss the proposed amendments and then take action on them. Based upon state law, you can modify those or adopt them as is, send it back to the Planning Commission for modification, or just reject the proposed amendments. Those are your four options. County Comprehensive Plan sets forth the vision and is the county's overall policy document. We talk about the seven town centers, I'll just note there's actually nine. North Beach and Chesapeake Beach are considered town centers in the county's comprehensive plan, but because they have their own planning and zoning authority, they don't come under the county's purview, the Commissioners' purview. So the ones that the Commissioners talked about in June, the Commissioners decided to make, to direct staff to pursue amending the comprehensive plan for four of the town centers. The three that our Commissioners decided not to pursue changing are Dunkirk, Owings and St. Leonard. The ones proposed for changes include Huntingtown, Prince Frederick, Lusby and Solomon's. I'm going to go very briefly through the ones, no changes. So Dunkirk in the Comprehensive Plan is proposed to expand to the northeast and the northwest, the Park and Ride and the Dunkirk District Park. Owings Town Center, the expansion that would eventually happen based upon the adopted Comprehensive Plan is that Owings would extend across Maryland two sixty. For St. Leonard, the Comprehensive Plan says to eventually expand St. Leonard to the southeast to include what the St. Leonard Elementary School, and this is as it was adopted in the, for future expansion in the twenty thirteen St. Leonard Master Plan, which had a lot of public input. Moving on to those that are proposed to change, Huntingtown. The proposal the Commissioners wanted to see was to remove the future expansion of Huntingtown. So the area in green, which is across Maryland two four, would be removed. For Prince Frederick, this is a close-up of the county comprehensive plan, future land use plan map. And so for Prince Frederick, this is a close-up. The map on the left is from the adopted plan, and it shows in dark purple the current town center plus Phase One, and then Phase Two expansion out towards the Community College and Stafford Road is in the light purple. The proposed changes, and I apologize, the colors are a bit different, but the, the bright purple on the right is the current town center boundary, or town center area. And the area in the lighter pink is the expansion area, as it, the other areas is just eliminated. So that future expansion that's in light pink no longer happens on the left. It happens on the right in that smaller area. As a result, the areas that are immediately, that were part of that Phase Two have been assigned either the orange color, which is residential, or the blue color for the areas out towards Stafford Road, which is an industrial category. The proposed, in the Comprehensive Plan, it talks about having various types of industrial, including mixed use. So not heavy, but allows for office uses and other uses that are similar to the employment center that is there now. Moving on to Solomon's and Lusby, the map on the left is a close-up from the Comprehensive Plan. It shows expansion areas in between Lusby and Solomon's, that will go away. And the area that is, I'll move to the map to the right now. The areas in green are areas that were proposed to be expanded into, or at least considered for that area between Lusby and Solomon's. So the green areas would be removed from any future expansion. So that includes the eastern side of the Dow Peninsula that's currently not in the town center. In the adopted plan, it was to be expanded to include, now it would not.
Thank you, Jenny.
You, that's what you were looking for.
Yes, yes, you do, yeah, thank you.
So that no expansion between Lusby and Solomon's, I would like to point out that the area on the north side of Lusby, between Maryland two four and that seven sixty-five, that includes the Patuxent Business Park, and also the Park and Ride and the storage units. That is proposed to remain as an expansion area for Lusby.
And you know, Jenny, if you remember just this morning, Jeff from the museum was talking about, you know, all the historic stuff down in Dow. And that's why it's so important to, you know, to preserve these things, you know, because Dow's very integral. I mean, it's, it's historic, it's just the fabric of, of the county. And, you know, so it's just, it's so important that these distinct places stay, to me, anyway, you know, that. So, so good, it's good news.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Moving on, this table shows the areas of the adopted Comprehensive Plan that are proposed to change. It includes the executive summary, there's a map in there of the future land use. Table of contents, it mentioned about the phasing of Prince Frederick, well, there will no longer be phasing, there would just be the expansion area. Chapter three had the most extensive proposed changes, and that includes both text and maps. And then in transportation, there is a map of the road classifications, and that shows the, the future silhouettes of the expansion areas. So that was changed to show that just those that would match these. The current map from the plan, and then the proposed map. So it shows a lot larger orange area around Prince Frederick, because that Phase Two area goes away. And then also around Lusby and Solomon's. And then I mentioned the industrial areas. The current map of Prince Frederick would change to, to this. I would note that there was, we retained a tiny little sliver that was part of the Phase One expansion, is still part of the expansion, that's south of Stokely Road and east of. Phase 1 expansion, is still part of the expansion, that's south of Stokely Road and east of Prince Frederick Boulevard. So tiny little piece there. And we follow parcel boundaries instead of splitting parcels on the very southwest, which is on the other side of one of the utility lines. My recommendation is that you review and discuss the proposed amendments and then hold the public hearing this evening.
Thank you. See you tonight.
Thank you.
Uh-oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hart.
So I know this is a little early because it's not the last meeting with this board, but we're close. So I wanted to thank Commissioner Gadway, you know, a Commissioner, I've only been on two boards. Commissioner leaving in the middle was different for me. And I was very curious how he was going to respond because the train doesn't stop, you know? So, I mean, it will, it always goes and when we're not here, it will keep going. And I was, I shouldn't say surprised after knowing Chris now, but knowing nothing at all about Chris, how fast you adapted. Came on, asked a lot of hard questions and saw a different side of county government. And I thought you did a fantastic job, my personal opinion. I thought that it's not easy. And I thought you did an incredible job of coming into something that was already moving and I think you should be very proud of the work that you put into it. And I wanted to thank you for that. Commissioner Williams, you know, I've thought about this for a long time. I met Commissioner Williams probably around 1979 when I was in sixth grade and he was in fourth?
Yes, sir.
At Our Lady Star at the Sea. So, and we have a lot in common in life, as far as what we do for a living, to our friends, family. We have so much in common. And Commissioner Williams, you have been more than a friend. You've been an example of how to do this job with class and dignity. We joke that public comment is on Tuesday's public comment saying they know our vehicle. You ask people what Steve Williams drives, they'll tell you what Steve Williams drives and they know if it's at that store or not. I've tried to think of how many ways to put it into words, Steve. I still can't come up with the amount of words. For the eight years of guidance that you have provided me personally, and it's funny because people go, oh, you and Steve are buddies. We very rarely ever vote the same way, you know? You know? And, 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 you know, I, most of the time, he's probably right, you know? So, you know, it's, we've had a lot of discussions over eight years. He inspired me eight years ago that this was something that I wanted to do. I didn't know if I could do it. But many, many conversations, you know, and helped me have the courage to do it. And, I mean, I tell you, Steve, I just, I don't know the words besides friendship, professional respect. I, I mean, Steve, you're a class act, you know? I mean, and I mean that. And I know your family and I know what they go through. Like I say, our lives are very, very similar in so many ways. I mean, we both have three rescue dogs. How weird is that? You know, I mean, it's just, it's, 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 I can't thank you enough. This county is not losing you. Obviously, you will still be down the street, you know? But, but, I mean, I tell you, Steve, just class. You know, I was trying to think, what word could I put in is class? You never disrespect this seat and you truly understand what, what it comes with. I mean, whether good comments come at you, bad comments, you've never disrespected Calvert County or the seat. And I personally am going to miss you tremendously. I'd just like to say enough words, Steve. And thank you for everything you've done for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Very kind.
Commissioner Gadway.
Commissioner Hart, thank you for the kind words. I'll reply to them in a couple of weeks.
Okay, okay.
I had the opportunity last week to attend a Girl Scout advance, advancement ceremony with President Hans. Had a great time there. They did have cookies afterwards, but they weren't Girl Scout cookies. They were homemade cookies.
They said, because they sell them all.
Right. You know, they don't eat their profits, okay? You know, that's business model number 101. On a sad note, I'd like to offer my condolences to the family of Jim Hook. He served in the, as either assistant superintendent or superintendent of the Calvert County Schools, spanning 15 years, spanning over three decades, 80s and 90s and the 2000s. He was a friend of mine. I'm honored to call him a friend of mine and he will be missed. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Williams?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Thank you again, Mike. Heartfelt. And I too want to extend my condolences to the Hook family for their loss. And that's all I have, sir.
So as Commissioner Gadway mentioned, Friday, a week ago, he and I attended a Girl Scout ceremony where 12 young ladies got the Silver Award, which is quite commendable. And they didn't have any Girl Scout cookies, but Bertie told me Sunday they're coming here in March to give us some more cookies. So we just have to look forward to that. I too would extend my condolences to the Hook family. Mr. Hook never taught me in school, but he was certainly there while I was in school. So he certainly was, gave his life to the educational system of Calvert County. A lot of students helped them along the way. So going to miss Mr. Hook. As was mentioned earlier, today is Commissioner Hart's birthday and Delegate Jerry Clark and Commissioner-elect Todd Ireland. I don't know what that says about today. I'll hold my comments to myself, but we'll wish those three individuals a very happy birthday. And put in a plug for the Christmas event on this coming Saturday, December 3, here at Prince Frederick at the Kings Park over on Church Street, from 11 to 5. Santa will be there. They have a lot of vendors. Last year, it was a great, great event. There was a lot of people there. So I hope they have good weather and we have another good turnout. And I believe that's all I have today. And to remind everybody, the public hearing starts tonight at 6:30 at the Harriet Brown Center on Dares Beach Road. And you can call in or view online. With that, Commissioner Williams, you have a motion for me?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to recess to executive session pursuant to 3-305B8 to consult with staff about potential litigation.
Second. Motion second. Now we go to executive session. Any discussion on that motion hearing? None. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Everyone have a great day.